Welcome everybody to this special call meeting of the Kentucky County Employee Retirement System. Eric, do you mind to read the opening statement, please? Eric, we can't hear anything.
How about now?
How about now?
There we go. All good.
This is a special meeting of the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to KRS 61826. May be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It's also being broadcast to the public live via, I think YouTube now. If you are speaking not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. If the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. Connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date.
Question, I caught the YouTube, are we not on Facebook anymore?
It is on Facebook. It's still on Facebook, yeah, we're archiving them over to YouTube after, maybe. Facebook right now, live.
Alright, thank you for that clarification. Sherry, can you take the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cheatham?
Here.
Dr. Carver? Dr. Carver?
You're muted, Dr. Carver. Actually, I think you may be frozen up, if you can come back.
I'll come back to her. Mr. Foster?
I'm here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman? Mr. Omira?
Here.
Mr. McGraw?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
We'll try again, Dr. Carver?
I think she popped back off, so she'll be back on here shortly, I'm sure.
We'll let you know when she comes in.
Being in form present, we'll go ahead and move forward. My understanding is there is no public comment, is that correct, Sherry?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you. Just short, I appreciated everybody making the effort to come and attend the Impact Forum a few weeks ago. I thought it went very well. You know, KPPA staff, Sherry, Sandy, all you guys did a fantastic job in pulling that together. I don't know that I, other than getting lost trying to find my way around the Campbell House, which is par for the course for me, I thought everything went very smooth, but I appreciate everybody, all the trustees making the effort to be there and to participate. I thought it was well done and a lot of good information shared and opportunities for people to ask questions. With that, there's a lot going on, not a lot going on, depending on how you want to look at it. A recession will be coming up here in just about a month and a half, so we're continuing to have our conversations with our employer partners as well as legislative folks as well. As those conversations progress, we'll keep everybody informed. But we want to make sure that we keep good relations with all those entities and stay on the same page with them as we move forward with our likes and requests out of the legislature. But with that, I'll move on to, I think the next item on the agenda is the Actuarial Committee Report. Mike, if you want to lead that portion, I'll turn it over.
Mr. Chair, I do want to acknowledge Dr. Carver has joined us.
Great.
So I will make sure that she's noted. Can you hear us now, Dr. Carver?
I think she's still muted.
She's still muted.
There we go. Can you hear us, Dr. Carver?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I think she's a little frozen a little bit, but we can hear her, I'll go ahead and mark down her attendance.
In this weather, I think everybody's a little frozen. Mike, you want to take it over?
Yes. I think you have in your documents that fact that the Actuarial Committee did meet recently. And there was good news reports, there was membership increase, with many more people contributing. And the investments have had a very positive results too. And so there's a recommended actuarial valuation indicated in that document, that was the full, the committee approved after receiving presentations from Danny and some others. And we need the full board to approve those today. And Danny, is he with us today?
I see him, there he comes.
Yes, sir, Mike.
Okay, you might want to fill in the details, then we'll ask the board to take action, Danny, after you give us more details, please.
Absolutely, actually, I was missing the board, I was going to have Janie walk through the start of this kind of a tag team approach, if that's alright. Presuming she's online.
I thought I saw her.
There she is, I can see her.
Okay.
No?
I see her, but can you hear?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mic issues there, thank you so much, Danny. And yes, we're here to talk about the June 30, 2025 Actuarial Evaluation. Again, this Actuarial Evaluation is one of the most important projects that we do for you all today. We do for you all each year, so think of the Actuarial Evaluation as kind of a snapshot of the financial status of CERS each year. But what we're going to do is we're not just going to share with you that snapshot of those results, but we're also going to explain kind of what's changed since the prior year. And then we're also going to take a forward-looking approach and say, how do we expect our results to change into the future? Another important aspect of this valuation is it does set the contribution requirements for one year effective July 1, 2026. So those are our fiscal year 2027 contribution rates. So I'm actually, I'm going to come back to these slides, but if, Sherry, if I actually can skip to page 10 of this presentation, I don't want to bury the lead here for the board members, and I want to kind of put in perspective kind of what we're talking about as we go through this presentation. But this slide has your required employer contribution rates for, again, that will go into effect July 1, 2026. So as the board can see, the contribution rates are coming down across both the non-hazardous and the hazardous fund by about 1% of payroll. And so again, our contribution rates are comprised of both a pension component and an insurance component. And so what we can see is the contribution rates for the pension funds are coming down pretty significantly. And then we are seeing an increase in the requirement for the insurance funds. And we're, as we go through the presentation, we're going to talk about what's happened over the last year and why that is. So if we actually could go back to slide 5, I'm sorry, Sherry, to skip around on you. So again, we're going to talk about kind of what's changed in the last year and why we're seeing that difference in our contribution rates this year. So some important things to note, we've had no changes in assumptions since our prior valuation. We did have one benefit change on our insurance funds, which we'll talk about. So if we actually move on to our next slide, we're going to start first with the membership experience. So keep in mind, we do collect these contributions as a percentage of payroll. And that makes our payroll and our active membership really important. It's why we talk about it each time we come in and talk about these valuations. So again, we saw another increase in our membership payroll this year. You can see payroll going up 6.3% on the non-hazardous side, 8.5% on the hazardous side. So you can see, again, compare that to our assumption, which is about 2%. You can see we beat that payroll growth assumption again this year as far as increases in our payroll. So again, we kind of talked about this during that Impact Forum and kind of what happens when we beat that payroll growth assumption. And you can see those contribution rates coming down accordingly. Also important to note is we did again see our active headcount going up on both funds, that's really good to see. So when we see payroll growing up, it's generally due to two main triggers. Either your active headcount is going up, which we saw, which is good to see. Or we're getting big salary increases for your current members, which we did also see and we will talk about. So if we actually move on to the next slide. So again, another big favorable experience that we had this last year was your investment experience across your pension and insurance funds. We saw between 11.1% and 11.6% investment returns. Significantly more favorable than that return, assumed return is 6.5%, so again, very good for the funds. If you put that another way, it's essentially 901 million more assets than we were expecting coming into, across all the funds there. But do keep in mind, when we do your, when we calculate those contribution rates, when we calculate all of your actuarial valuation results, we don't recognize that entire 901 million at once. Essentially, what we do is we're smoothing in your investment gains and losses over a five-year period. The purpose of that is to reduce volatility in your results. So again, one of the biggest sources of volatility you're going to have in your evaluation results is going to be your investments. We know those returns are going to go up and down each year. We don't want that in your contribution rates, we don't want your contribution rates to go up and down according to, you know, one-year return. So we do smooth those gains and losses in over a five-year period. So when we look at what we're actually recognizing for this year's valuation, we recognize a portion of that 901 million. And then we're also recognizing gains and losses from the last four years. And essentially, what that equated to this year was about 630 million in asset gains that we're recognizing. So essentially, what that means is your assets were 630 million higher. That goes to directly decreasing your unfunded liability, and that also decreases those contribution rates. So if we go to the next page here, we'll talk about that legislation that passed in 2025. So Senate Bill 10 passed in 2025, and that increased the insurance benefits for some members. So we're just talking about that insurance dollar subsidy, so that's just for your members who are hired after July 2003. So again, that's just that dollar subsidy that those members get. So this legislation increased that dollar subsidy to $40 and $50 for your non-hazardous and hazardous members. Again, that's just for your non-Medicare retirees, so just that pre-65 portion. And then it also does require that those members meet certain service thresholds in order to get that benefit as well. But again, that is a benefit increase, so that does increase the liability across the funds, and that was 252 million. To offset some of that increase, we did see increases in the member contributions as well. So on the non-hazardous side, again, we have members paying 1% into your insurance funds. So it stayed 1% for your non-hazardous funds, but we did expand who was actually paying in for the insurance fund. So previously, it was just members hired after September 2008. But we expanded it to include all of the members that were hired after July 2003. So again, that's more member contributions that we're expecting. And then on the hazardous side, it did expand to the July 2003 folks, but it also increased that member contribution rate from 1% to 2% for all members. So again, we're increasing the liability to this legislation, it's going to increase your contribution rates accordingly, with a little bit of that being paid by those increases in your member rates. If we move on to our next slide, I'm actually going to start with the insurance fund liability, since we're already talking about our insurance funds. So we had a 545 million loss on our insurance funds on the liability side. Essentially, what that means is your liability was 545 million higher than we were expecting. And if the board may remember, when we were back here in September, we were talking about the big increases in those 2026 Medicare premiums that we were seeing. And again, this is a direct, this liability loss is a direct result of those big increases in those 2026 healthcare premiums that we saw. On the retirement side, we did see a loss in the retirement fund liability as well, although significantly smaller than the insurance side. And again, the majority of this loss is going to be those salary increases that we continue to see for those active members. So I think that brings us back to the original slide where we started. It brings us back to those employer contribution requirements. So again, we have the contribution rates that are recommended that would go into effect July 1, 2026. So again, that's 17.43% for the non-hazardous fund, and that's 34.72% for the hazardous fund. So again, you can see that we're seeing those contribution rates come down for the pension fund. A lot of that is those payroll increases that we saw, that we saw, again, more payroll, you spread those contributions off across additional payroll, those contribution rates come down. And then we're also seeing decreases because those investment gains we saw. We do see the same thing on our insurance fund, but because of Senate Bill 10 and because of those significant increases on our health insurance premiums, that offset all of that, and so we are seeing that net increase in your, on the insurance side fund. So ultimately, though, on a net for the total contribution rate, it is a net decrease across both funds. If we move on to the next slide there, if we want to talk about, when we talk about contribution rates coming down, but how that comes into actually dollars that we expect to come into the trust from these contributions. So a lot of times when we see those contribution rates come down because of those payroll, that payroll growth, the contributions that the fund is still getting remain about the same, and you can see that here. So even though the contribution rate came down, you can see on the non-hazardous fund, we're expecting about the same contributions to come in. A slight decrease from the 596 million to the 593 million. And then on the hazardous side, we're actually requiring a little bit more contributions on a dollar amount. Again, because the payroll grew more on the hazardous side than the non-hazardous side. And then on the next slide here, we're just going to look at that unfunded liability. And so again, the unfunded liability here, if you look at it on the pension fund, you can see your unfunded liability is going down across both pension funds. That's really good to see, that's what we want to see. Again, two main drivers here, the first is the commitment to paying those full actuarially determined contributions. Those actuarially determined contributions are bringing down the unfunded liability each year, and that's what we want to see. The other, of course, are those investment gains, those helped bring down the unfunded liability even more than we were expecting. On the insurance side, again, those 2026 health insurance premiums did have a significant impact. And we do see the unfunded, we do see a decrease in what we actually had surplus assets on those funds, actually bringing us below 100% funded on that hazardous side, you can see there. I'm actually going to pause there before we start getting into some historical information, just to see if there's any questions, comments from the board.
Janie, if you don't mind to address, because I know we've got a few members, but I think it's always good for everybody to remember that, you know, when we set these contribution rates, we are setting them based on an end goal of being fully funded in 2049. And that's, we know where that number is, so it's a legislative requirement that we're trying to hit that target. And because of that, it determines what these rates are from one year to the next. If you don't mind to put that in a little bit cleaner language, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, although I think you said it great yourself, I don't know that I have much better language to put it. But essentially, what's going on is that your fund is funded by what we call actuarially determined contributions. So when you have a pension plan, there's always going to be one unknown. So right now, you're known, is that we know you're going to be fully funded by 2049, because that is the funding policy set in statute. And we calculate these contributions in order to reach that goal. But each year, we do these valuations, essentially, we're saying, what's changed in the last year? And how do we need to adjust these contribution rates in order to continue meeting that 2049 goal? And that's essentially what we're doing right here. If we actually go back to slide 10, Sherry, you can see essentially what we're doing is we're adjusting those contribution rates each year to continue to make sure we're on track for that 2049 goal. And that's what we did this year with this calculation. Any other comments, questions? So before we start looking forward, we're going to take a quick look back and kind of see where we've been and kind of see the trends in the information that we have seen over the past few years. So we're first going to look at your historical funded ratio. So essentially, your funded ratio is just going to be your assets divided by your liability. It's a number, another way to essentially look at kind of the funded status of the retirement system. So again, ultimately, the goal is to reach that 100% funded status by the 2049. So right now, as of the 2025, you can see the non-hazardous pension, and this is just the pension funds, the non-hazardous pension fund is about 61% funded, with the hazardous pension fund about 57%. What's important to look at on this chart, though, is you can see that increasing trend that we've had essentially since 2020. So essentially, since we've been putting in these higher contribution rates based on the better assumptions, you can see that funded ratio trending up. Now, there may be years where there might be a blip where it may go down or up, but you can see the overarching trend is going up. And that's what you want to see when you're funding a pension plan. And if we move on to the next, we're going to look a little bit further into the active membership count and that payroll, just because it's so important when we talk about funding a pension plan. So when we look at your active membership count, again, we did see increases again this year. But if you look at over the last 10 years, you can see that overall, the active membership count has stayed pretty steady. We did see some decreases back a few years ago, so we are kind of getting back to where we were in 2015. At least on the non-hazardous side, we have seen a few gains there on the hazardous side. But if you look on the next chart here, what you can really see, and so again, for a few years, we were seeing steady increases in that payroll, close to that 2% payroll growth assumption. But you can kind of see over the last four years, that payroll has just skyrocketed. This is very unusual, it's not something that we generally see, but you can see that payroll has just really skyrocketed over the last few years. Again, a lot of that is just because of some additional money, the high inflation that we've had over the last few years. Employers just trying to really keep up with that inflation, and they've also had the budgets, you know, in order to pay those salary increases for their employees. What is important to say here is, we don't necessarily think that this is going to be sustainable long-term. We've actually have seen a little bit going away, we've started to see it taper off a little bit. How long it will take us to get back to kind of the norm, that's hard for us to say at this time. But we will just kind of see that significant growth that we've seen over the last few years for the pension plan. Now, for CERS, that's been favorable because it's helped bring those contribution rates down. Now, we have seen some liability losses because of that, because of, similar to what we saw this year. But it has allowed us to bring those contribution rates down as a percentage of payroll. And then also, just kind of, for completely, it's kind of looking at your retiree membership headcount. So you can see your retiree membership headcount has been increasing steadily across both funds, this is an expected trend, we expect to see this. We expect your retirees to enter retirement faster than they leave it. So again, there's nothing out of the ordinary about this, and we do expect that trend to continue going forward. And if we see how that equates to actually benefit payments being paid out of the fund, and these are the actual benefits being paid, you can see again, a steady increase in those benefit payments over the last 10 years or so. Again, that's a trend we expect to continue, at least for the foreseeable future. And then finally, on this slide here, this slide is really just provided to the board for completeness. These are all of the underlying calculations of all the evaluation results as of June 30, 2025. But I will go through each number so that the board understands what they are. So I'm going to start actually at the bottom of this chart here. So again, we have the non-hazardous system, we have the hazardous system, and then each of those has the pension and the insurance fund. And then we've shown the results as of both the last year's valuation as of 2024, and then also this year's valuation as of 2025. So if we start at the bottom chart here, you can see, we'll start with that actuarial approved liability. Essentially, what that is, is we project out all of the benefits we expect to be paid out of the CERS trusts. And we get a present value of that as of today, and those are today's dollars, and that's what the liability is as of today. We compare that against that actual value of asset number, that smoothed asset number we were talking about before. And then the difference between those two numbers is that unfunded liability that we often talk about. And again, kind of like I said before, you can see that unfunded liability going down across both your pension funds, which was, which is always what you want to see, which is the trend you want to see. On the insurance funds, you can see as of last year, both of those funds actually had what we call surplus assets, so their assets were higher than their liability. But you can see those surplus assets came down a bit for insurance because of those health insurance premiums. And we actually do have an unfunded liability on the hazardous side. And then finally, the last number there is that funded ratio, again, that's funded ratio that we talked about, that's just your assets divided by your liability. And you can see again, on both the pension funds, that going up this year, which is the trend we want to see. If we move to the top of this chart, these are the components of those contribution rates that we talked about. So again, that top right there, top right there, that's what we call the normal cost rate. So essentially, this is the ongoing cost of your pension plan. These are the, this is the cost of essentially your active members accruing your benefits. Think of a member with, you know, 15 years of service, this is the cost of them accruing that 16th year of service. We offset that by what your members are paying into the fund. So for the pension plan, that's that 5% and the 8%. For the insurance fund, you can see that's that 1% that the members are paying in, now the 2% for the hazardous fund. And then we add in a load for administrative expenses. And then we add in a load for administrative expenses. And then we also add in the amortization cost. And essentially, that amortization cost is what is going into the fund to pay off that unfunded liability that you see at the bottom of the chart there, to achieve that funding goal of the 2049. Add all of that together, and finally, you get your final contribution rates. I'm going to pause again right there before I move into our projection slides, just again, to see if there's any questions or comments from the board. Once we calculate your contribution rates each year, we always want to look again, what's changed in the last year. But what's also important is we want to take a forward looking approach. And we want to say, how are those results going to change in the future? How do we expect your results to, how do we expect your results to look each year going forward? So essentially, when we do your projections, we assume that all actuarial assumptions are met. That includes that 6.5% annual investment return. We assume that all actuarially actuarially determined contributions are paid. And we do assume that that membership payroll is going to increase by 2% each year. So if we look at what this looks like, so this is just for your non hazardous fund. You can see the pension fund is on the left and the insurance fund is on the right here. So you can see, yes, the insurance fund looks really tiny. We did use similar scaling for the two funds, and that was on purpose, just to show you the relative size of the pension fund compared to the insurance fund. But I will start with the pension fund, so the the chart there on the top left. So those blue lines there, that's your unfunded liability. Your red line there, that's your funded ratio. So you can see that blue line, you can see that unfunded liability being steadily paid off year over year. That's the trend we want to see from your funding policy. We want to see that unfunded liability going down each year. And then we see that funded ratio going up to 100%, achieving the 100% in 2049. How that looks is the underlying contributions is because of the contributions we're paying into the fund. Because that unfunded liability is being paid off because of the contributions that are getting paid in the fund. And you can see that on the chart there at the bottom. So those green lines there, that's the employer contribution dollar amount. Those are the dollar amounts coming in. And then the black line is the contribution rate as a percentage of pay. So you can see generally as a dollar amount that those contributions are increasing each year. And that's because of our payroll growth assumption. We assume that amortization cost is going to grow at 2% each year. So you can see as a dollar amount, those contributions are going to continue to grow along with our payroll. But the black line there stays pretty level. It stays pretty level as a percentage of payroll until we get towards the end there where we've got some bases falling off. And we did talk about that a bit in our forum. And then in 2049, you can see there's that big cliff where the contribution rates go down, and that's when we pay off all that unfunded liability, and we're back to just paying our normal cost rate. I will note there, you can see there's a bit of a decrease there in the employer contribution rates in those first few years. That's really due because we do have those deferred investment gains that we saw this year. So if we don't have any losses that offset those investment gains, we are going to recognize those in future years, which will further bring down those contribution rates. On the insurance side, you can see right now, we are currently projecting the insurance fund on the non hazardous side to stay above 100% funded, and those contributions to generally stay pretty low as well. And then on that hazardous side, the story is pretty similar, so I'm not going to go through the whole thing. But again, you can see the charts look very similar to the pension fund with a pretty similar trend. With that being said, that's all I really have. I'm just going to wrap up real quick with a summary. I think is I think that's my last slide. So just kind of in summary, again, those we can see those contribution rates coming down across both funds. Those pension, those pension contribution rates were pulled down by that membership payroll and by that favorable investment experience. It was offset by increases in our insurance contribution rates because of those 2026 health insurance premiums. Again, keep in mind those big increases we saw on that Medicare side. Again, the unfunded liability continues to decrease on the pension side. The funded ratios continue to go up. That's the trend we want to see. We did see increases in our unfunded liability due to the insurance fund, again, because of that health insurance premiums. So ultimately, that being said, again, the contributions that are currently being paid in the fund, they're doing the job they need to do. It's just imperative that we continue with this current funding policy and continue maintaining those full contribution rates coming into the fund. But with that said, that's that's all I have for the board today. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Mike?
Yes, sir. The chairman, based on the information provided in our packet and the more details given by GRS in their in our meeting today, I would advise the board that the investment committee has considered all of that and have recommended that the evaluate the actuarial valuation results as outlined in the report be accepted by the full board. I'll make that motion.
And a motion, who was the second?
This Merle.
Merle, okay. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion of the acceptance of the actuarial valuation, including the adoption of the contribution rates for the 2027 fiscal year, beginning July 20th, 26th. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, reclamation is adopted. Thanks, Danny. Janie, we appreciate your hard work and your explanation, as always. Mike, thank you.
Yes, sir. I think we're moving in the right direction.
I don't think there's any question. I like reports like that. Okay. Let's see. Next item on the agenda, Erin, I believe we have an application to voluntarily cease participation from an employer. Would you like to tell us what's going on and what where we are with that and what we need to do?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good afternoon. Today, I'm bringing to you an application from Metcalf Healthcare Center to voluntarily cease participation in CERS. This is the first employer in CERS that has filed an application to voluntarily cease participating. There have been seven employers in KERS who have ceased participation from that system. Metcalf Healthcare, like I said, it's the first application we received, but I will say we've been in conversation with Metcalf Healthcare Center for several years. I think our conversations on cessation began in 2018. Under KRS 78535, a non stock nonprofit corporation organized under KRS Chapter 73 is eligible to request voluntary cessation from CERS. Metcalf Healthcare Center does file under this. This is a nursing home facility that provides licensed, skilled, and personal care services. The facility is owned by the Metcalf Fiscal Court and is operated through a board of directors appointed by the Metcalf County Judge Executive. It currently has 48 active employees. Metcalf Healthcare Center has successfully filed the Form 7730. That's the application and all the accompanying documentation. We have received the $10,000 deposit that is to be used towards the administrative cost of processing the application. The ceasing employer is responsible for paying all administrative costs as it relates to the cessation. They do not have any outstanding or open invoices, no reporting errors, and they are not a party to any pending litigation with CERS, KPPA, or KRS. They will be required to pay the full actuarial cost of withdrawal by a lump sum payment when that time comes. In on page 143 of your board books, I have put in there a timeline of the cessation process. This is just the first step of the process. We will start contacting all the current and former employees of the employer to let them know that of their intentions to cease participation. We're actually working on those letters now. We've also set up meetings, onsite meetings later this month. And we also have virtual option for their employees to speak with our counselors, our counseling staff to know how this affects their benefits. The the effective cessation date for this will be June 30th, 2026, so the end of this fiscal year, if it if it's approved. And they have also received in your packet, you have all of the information that was required. I wanted to note that we have put in the appendix of your board books. There's some rather large documents that we didn't put out for all the board materials. It's hundreds of pages. It's their last five years of financial statements, their articles of incorporation. Those are all listed in or in the appendix of the board books. I did want to mention, before we get go to the vote, that this is a little different than any of the cessions that we have seen thus far in that the Metcalf Healthcare Center is actually selling the corporation and intending to use the funds from that sale to pay for the cessation cost. So typically, in most cessation, the employees will continue to be reported through the end of the cessation or through the cessation date, which is June 30th. However, for this particular entity, if the sale occurs prior to that date, because they are selling to a private company, the employees will stop being reported whenever that sale occurs. Now, that sale, it's my understanding the sale could occur as early as January 1st. That may be a little aggressive, but they do anticipate that it will finalize prior to the effective cessation date. So with that, I wanted to bring to your attention that on page 152 of the board books, there is some financial projections that Metcalf has provided for you all to your review. The anticipated sale price is 11.1 million. The estimated cessation amount that they perceived prior to filing the application was 3.8 million was the liability that they would have to pay for the cessation. We have had many conversations with them, and they are going to set up an escrow account to put the money for the cessation cost in that escrow escrow account. And they're going to actually put a little more. We had some conversations with GRS and what an appropriate amount would be, and they're going to put in 20% above what the estimated amount would be. So 4.5 million is what will go into the escrow account. So then, when all of that, those transactions transpire, then, like I said, the employees will stop being reported. If the sale does not happen, if that doesn't go through, then they'll continue to report the employees through the cessation date. And if they want to continue on with the cessation, they can do so, but they again will have to pay for the lump sum cost in the in the end. All of these employees will have the option to transfer their CERS balances to the new employer's retirement plan, if they so choose. And those that elect or choose to do that, those individual members will be removed from the final cessation cost. They will not be included in the actuarial cost that is provided at the end. So the effective cessation date is June 30th. This vote is just to start the administrative process. After the final cost has been calculated by GRS, which will occur after the 2026 vow has been approved by the board. So that will be December 26th. They will process the cost. This will come back to you all for final approval or denial, if you reject, before this process is complete. So I know that that was a lot of information. Like I said, there is a lot of material in your board books. I'm happy to answer any questions, but this will require a vote by the board, approval from the board to process the do the administrative processing of the application.
I think Dr. Hackford can stand up first.
Thank you. I was curious. You mentioned that the employees can transfer their assets to their new employer. Is it just their contribution or is it their contribution plus? Exactly how is that determined? And if they decide to remain in the system, how is that, are they going to be affected at all? Or are they going to be just as if they would, this transaction had never occurred?
If they elect to leave their account in this or their account in the system, then they will, it will, they won't earn any more service credit, but they will be eligible for benefits, a retirement benefit on the service credit that they've earned to date. Additionally, they can, if they go to work with another participating employer, then they could add on to the service credit that they already have. If they elect to transfer their account, then for tier one and tier two, they get their accumulated account balance, which is the contributions they've put in, plus any interest on those contributions. For tier three members, if they're, it gets approved, which will be early 2027, when you all will make that decision. If the cessation is approved, then those tier three members will automatically vest, even if they don't have 60 months of service credit. So if they elect to transfer their account, then they will get the member contributions, they will get the interest on those contributions, and they will get the employer pay credit plus any interest on the the employer pay credit. But those transfers will not take place until after final board approval.
And the effects of those, if they transfer, sorry, Steve, the effects of if they, does the effect on their healthcare in retirement differ between tiers?
Their healthcare, or is your question when they retire, is their healthcare different?
If they choose, if they choose, let's say, a tier one, tier two, choose to to roll their proceeds to the new employer or wherever they choose to roll it.
Yes, sir.
What's the effect on on their healthcare down the road benefit when they choose to retire? And same thing for for tier three. Are those benefits forfeited?
Yes, sir. And so if they transfer their account out of CERS, then they wouldn't receive any pension or health insurance benefits if they choose to do that.
In your counseling with these people, do you provide them any kind of number as to what that benefit may or may not be worth in retirement?
We do. We would, we provide retirement estimates additionally. We also, if there's a member that is eligible to purchase service credit, we'll show them that cost because the service purchase would have to be made before the cessation. We we show them all of that information, and we do discuss the health insurance benefits that they would be forfeiting. Additionally, if they have 48 months of service or more, there's the $5,000 death benefit that they're eligible for when they retire. So that would also be forfeited as well. But all of that information is discussed during the process of counseling.
Good. Again, Erin, just just make sure I understood what you're saying. We do provide them with a dollar estimate of what the healthcare benefit itself is worth.
Yes, we would tell that. We would give them the amount based on their service credit, the amount of contribution that we would pay if they retired from the system, the amount of health insurance contributions that would be paid on their behalf towards their premium if they did that.
Thank you. Steve, I believe you got a question, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. A couple. So I wanted to, I guess, make sure I understood. If they, if their employees are not vested, even if they left their contributions with CERS, there's no, there's no benefit unless they were to return to a CERS. unless they were to return to a CERS credited employer in the future and, and reach the vesting period, is that correct?
They would, right, they wouldn't be eligible for retirement if they're not vested. They wouldn't be eligible for retirement until they hit the vesting point and the required age. Uh, they would continue to earn the 4% and the, uh, interest that's given to the tier three accounts each year until they, um, take a distribution.
Okay. And you mentioned the, um, 3.8 million, um, in pension liability, is that, if I understood correctly, that's an estimate based on 630-25 balance and, and actuarial, or provided firm, um, figure as part of this process?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, at, at this point, I guess you're looking for a preliminary approval. Are there any other approvals or steps that would come back to this board between now and the end of next year?
No, there would just, um, there's a lot of administrative work that goes on between now and the next time we'll bring something to you, but no, no other approval before then.
Anybody have any other questions with regard to the application from, and if I remember from a previous discussion, Metcalfe Healthcare is the only healthcare employer that we've got in the system, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Steve, do you have another?
Yes, sorry, I thought of one more. Is the, is the withdrawal process, and forgive me if this was included and I didn't catch it, is the withdrawal process prescribed in KRS?
Yes, it's in, um, KRS 78535, and the administrative rate is 105KAR1:145.
Okay, thank you.
This, uh, I'm glad you asked that question, Steve, because it brings up a follow-up that's probably really deep in the weeds. If I understood what you told me, let's say you have a tier three employee who's been with the employer for three years, and they choose to roll out, they're going to get not only their contributions in interest, but the employer's contribution in interest, correct?
That's correct. They will also receive the employer pay credit.
Okay, so, based on our discussions at the Impact Forum, let's say, year from now, three years from now, four years from now, whatever the case may be, they go back to work for a participating CRS entity. They can roll those funds back into the system, but they will not gain back those three years or five years, or whatever the case may be, in service credit, is that still the case?
For, this is a little different for cessation, with the question that we talked about, um, at the Impact Forum was specific to employees who are, once again, participating, um, through a, through a participating employer, and had refunded service from an employer who was still participating. Once this employer ceases participation, members will not, if they worked there previously and they refunded service, they will not have the option to put that time back into, um, the system because they, because this employer has ceased. And that is, um, based on federal, um, guidelines and statutes.
But they could choose to leave those assets in place for a period of time if they thought maybe they would go to work for a CRS employer?
They can, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Steve?
Yes, all right, one more scenario based on that. So if they are not vested, they refund, they choose to refund, so now they have no, no service credit on the books. Down the line, they come back to work for a, uh, CERS member employer, would they have the option to do a service purchase for the time that they had had before that was refunded, or that?
They would not. They would not be able to purchase back any time from the employee, the ceased employer. So, from Metcalfe, if they had other service from an employer that was still participating, they can purchase that time back, but they cannot regain the service from the ceased employer.
Got it, thank you.
Hearing none at this point, uh, in order to move forward with the preliminary approval, I would need a motion to accept Form 4430, Application for Voluntary Cessation from Metcalfe Healthcare as participating employer in CRS, and to initiate the administrative process required for ceasing, uh, for the ceasing employer. Do I have that in a motion?
Some.
Second.
And a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, preliminary approval has been granted.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move to item eight on the agenda, CRS Procurement Policy Amendments. Ed and Eric, I'll let you all walk us through, through that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, uh, it's really fortuitous that I'm the first person to speak after, uh, Erin just very eloquently went through, uh, the cessation process, because those trustees who don't know Erin well, you got an opportunity to see, uh, just how proficient she is at what she does. And I say that because it was just, uh, announced to staff that Erin had been offered and had accepted, uh, the Assistant Executive Director position at KPPA. And I wanted to congratulate her on that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, and I, I want to commend Eric for the heavy lift that he and his team, uh, have, have done on this. Uh, at the same time, I apologize for, uh, the need to get this before the board, uh, in short order. It wasn't until, uh, the end of October that we knew we would, uh, need to, uh, change this policy, uh, in order to ultimately get the result that we were after. Let me back up to maybe April or May of this year, when we, uh, wanted to have a third-party review, uh, some of the limited partnership agreements, uh, at, uh, investment agreements at KPPA. We, we went through a process and, and it was ultimately determined that we would go through, uh, the Finance Committee to, uh, issue an RFP, uh, for that process, and that's ultimately what, what we did. Uh, when, when we were about to determine how that would play out, we had a different idea of what that outcome would be than, than maybe what, uh, others, uh, thought. And so we came to a fork in the road where we had to make a decision as to whether or not to, uh, continue to push forward our belief and claim that our policy as it stood would allow us to get the end result that we wanted, or simply to make the determination that we would change our policy. So that's where we are today. We, we made the determination that we would change the policy. So what you have in board books is, uh, the redline version and the clean version of what we initially thought the process would look like if we continued utilizing the process that had gotten us to that point, i.e. that it would go through finance and, and that finance would then make a, a final recommendation to the board, uh, of a candidate. After discussing this further, and after the material had been sent to board books, it was determined that it probably made sense, and I agree with this determination, uh, since this is an investment policy, that, uh, we not do anything to remove the decision-making process from the Investment Committee. So even though the redline version and the final version that you have in board books talks about, uh, the fact that, uh, it may go to a, to the appropriate committee, uh, we have since revamped that and removed any indication of any other committee save the Investment Committee. So I, I, I want to, uh, state that clearly. And the other change that you'll see from what is in board books is the only designation or the only time that we speak to, uh, CERS discretion is in the overall umbrella, uh, department of whether or not an RFP would be requested by the CERS Board under the CERS procurement policy at all. Because there are provisions in the existing policy that would allow, uh, the CERS Board to, in certain circumstances, allow the CEO to simply on behalf of the board, sign, uh, a procurement opportunity on behalf of the board. So, uh, I, I just wanted to, to preface, uh, what I wanted to walk through with you with those two things, and, and Cherry, if you could, uh, put on the screen the, uh, the information that I, uh, asked. So, we had already put it in board books before, uh, we came to these, uh, what I'll call substantive changes, uh, to the policy. Uh, the first is, is simply saying, let me, let me back up and say that there's a lot of red ink in the redline version, uh, when there's only one simple change that is being made. It was determined that a qualified candidate pool could be accessed through Section 2 of our policy as it currently existed. But that same qualified, uh, candidate pool could not be assessed through Section 5 of the current existing policy. So, all that we're doing with this policy is taking the language in Section 2 related to, uh, qualified candidate pool and pulling it down to Section 5. That's it. That's the, that's the totality of the change that's being made. Now, since we were in the document, there are some, some widths that were changed to shall, and we made some changes to, uh, the quiet policy since we were already in the document. But, uh, let's walk through the two pages that I, that I have here. Uh, at CRS's discretion, a request for proposal, uh, request for information, or request for quotations, that's simply saying that, that we have the discretion of asking for that, or, as our policy currently states, in some limited circumstance, we could do something else. So it's at our discretion that we would ask for either an RFP, an RFI, or an RFQ. Under, under Section 2B, uh, the preliminary screening, uh, it, it basically says, and the change that we're making, is that the KPPA staff or the investment consultant would narrow the preliminary list to a candidate pool. So if there were 12 people who applied under the RFP, there would be a narrowing of that list to a candidate pool, um, under this, this policy, either by investment staff and/or the investment consultant. The next change is, is under C, the candidate pool. Uh, for A, uh, the change that, that we're making here is, it says that, that the last two sentences, that the KPPA investment staff may request the approval of the Investment Committee to retain outside counsel to assist in the contract process in consultation with the CERS General Counsel. So we're inserting our General Counsel in the decision-making process of whether or not there is an outside counsel that should be, uh, engaged in execution of our policy. The final sentence there says, "CRS reserves the right to determine and hire the outside counsel as appropriate." Those are all things that we've, we've talked about before in terms of, of whether there was a need for specialized counsel for CERS, that it would be, uh, CERS and its General Counsel who would make that determination. Under Section C, the co-investment opportunities, the only thing we did there was to add CRS, CERS before planned assets. There was, it's a CERS policy, but it could have been confused that maybe the planned assets were speaking to assets of the old KRS or assets that belonged to KRS. So we simply inserted, uh, CERS planned assets there, so that, that would be clear. Under, under Section 4, External Investment Consultant, um, there are, there are a couple of, of general thoughts that, uh, we've, we've changed here. The first is, "The Investment Committee shall be provided with a candidate pool of up to three, uh, consultants who have met the screening and due diligence criteria. The candidate pool shall be provided to the Investment Committee." So we've, again, re- removed it from various committees, saying that the candidate pool will go to the Investment Committee. Secondly, we just restate that, again, under this section, because, again, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have the same issue again, that something that was in the document, but not in a particular section, would be determined to, to be dispositive about whether or not the policy could be used. So, in some instance, we simply repeat information to make sure that it's in, uh, every section of the policy. So we did that, uh, in Section 4 by saying, "At CERS's discretion, a request for proposal, uh, RFI or RFQ, uh, would be made." Uh, the, the final initial, uh, change that we're asking for under Section 4 is, "The KPPA investment staff shall provide a, a written report to the Investment Committee documenting the details of the search process that was performed, along with a qualified candidate pool." And we simply have added here, C-Section 2C of this policy. So we're not going to restate again the, the, what makes up a qualified candidate pool, just refer back to what's listed, uh, in the, in the policy previously. So then, uh, we get to Section 3, our, uh, letter C of Section 4, the analysis. And under the third bullet, uh, it states that KPPA investment staff may request an approval of the Investment Committee to retain outside counsel to assist, uh, and we indicate and make the same change to put, uh, the CERS General Counsel, uh, in that mix and to determine that the CERS General Counsel, uh, would be the one to determine, uh, who that outside counsel would be. Number 4, we, we again, wanted to be clear about, as clear as we could be, given, uh, the changes that, that we were being asked to make in order to implement the policy. That, uh, KPPA investment staff, uh, shall establish qualified, uh, candidate pool, we again, refer it back to Section 2C of the policy, uh, for the Investment Committee, and that the KPPA investment staff may make a non, a non-binding recommendation, uh, to the Investment Committee. Finally, in Section 5, uh, which, uh, Finally, in Section 5, which speaks to procurement of investment analytical, professional, research, and technical services, there, there's a, a header that, that we've inserted here to say, "The procurement of investment-related goods and services shall be coordinated by KPPA staff based upon established criteria through one of the methods below." And in, in A, we simply add, because again, we, we don't want it to be misconstrued, what we're ultimately doing here, or have to come back and revisit it in short order. We want to add the sentence, "If the vendor could receive compensation of more than $10,000, the KPPA staff shall compile a qualified candidate pool," again, C-Section 2C of this policy, "for consideration by the Investment Committee." So that, some may say that that may well be the section under which what we started out to do would fall. So we wanted to make sure that, that was covered. We don't see any change under Section B. Under Section C, we add, again, Section 5, letter C, we add, "The Investment Committee shall be provided with a candidate pool of up to three vendors who have met the screening and due diligence criteria established by KPPA investment staff in consultation with the Investment Committee." "The candidate pool shall be provided to the Investment Committee for its review and approval with ratification by the CERS Board at its next regular meeting." So that is the crux of the language that we were told we needed in this policy to be able to get a qualified pool for what we started in finance, but will ultimately go to the Investment Committee. And with that, we, while we were in the document, it was relayed to us that the information under the quiet period really needed some, some work. And Eric, if you wouldn't mind speaking to the change that was made in the, in the quiet period.
Yeah, so the quiet period, as it was originally written, it looks like, i- it was vague. It was unclear when a quiet period would be imposed, by who, who would be able to talk to the vendor. So this was rewritten, simply says that the Board or the Investment Committee may designate that a procurement be subject to a quiet period where communications are restricted. The Board or the Investment Committee will fix the time and terms of the quiet period. I think that flexibility is important because each procurement is a little bit different. And may delegate the responsibility to staff. And then there's a sentence in there about, "Nothing should be construed to limit the Board in discussing procurement essentially amongst itself, especially during meetings." So that was just rewritten to really make it clear what the, what the quiet period is and to make it clear how it would work.
If I could say, thank you Eric, one more thing about Section 4, which is the, the outside investment consultant section of, of the policy. I, I didn't mention it originally because it hasn't changed from the old policy, but there is a statement there that would be in the new policy as well, that there's nothing in this policy which would keep the CERS Board from executing their authority to hire an investment consultant. That's the one area in statute that has been reserved to the CERS Board, and this policy preserves that. So we, we didn't have an opportunity to redline these changes for you, but we do have a clean version of what the ultimate policy would look like, which incorporates the changes that I just spoke to. But again, the only thing that we're doing and changing in this document is taking language that existed in Section 2 and bringing that language to Section 5. That's how fundamental a change we're, we're asking. I'll, I'll try to take any questions of anyone who has them.
Anybody have questions? I know we, it's been a while since we've talked about this, but we've had conversations with legal, and I think everybody's comfortable with what we need to do. It's really, from my perspective, an issue of just providing continuity between sections and cleaning up the language, particularly in that quiet period section that was identified.
Yes. Just curious, in terms of processing this, does this have to go back through Finance Administration before it can be activated?
No, it, it, it will not go back through Finance. Finance is being totally removed from this process. It would go to the Investment Committee to, so the qualified candidate pool would be submitted to the Investment Committee.
Yeah, I think Dr. Craig.
Oh, oh, Finance Administration, yes, yes it does. It must have to go, thank you Bill. It does have to go to Finance and Administration for final approval. My understanding and what has happened in the past is that if we hadn't heard back from them within 60 days, then the policy's fine. We probably will do what we can to try to truncate that timeline and ask that it can get, to see if it can get reviewed sooner rather than later.
Any other questions? Here are none, I'd like to get a motion to.
Someone hands up.
Bill has it.
I lost a hand. Who was it?
Mr. O'Meara has, had his hand up, and then Steve, Steve Willer also.
Okay. Bill, I think you were probably first from what I saw on the screen anyway.
I can defer to Steve and come back later.
Okay. Steve?
Sure. Two, two quick questions. On Section 5A and B, how did those align with, you could receive compensation of more than $10,000? How does that relate to B, which has a $10,000 to $49,999?
Well, it, any time that you could receive more than $10,000.
So does that trump B?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't trump B. And to the point that, that Eric made to me earlier today, we can put that same language in B so that, and just change that number so that it's clear. Because we, we definitely want this to be clear. So if, if your point, Steve, is to, to restate the language at the, at the different dollar amount for Section B, we could do that. But that wasn't the impetus for the adding of that sentence. It was simply that if a determination was made that the payment to a vendor would be less than $10,000, and there are some scenarios in which the RFP that is out could conceivably fit in that category, then there is no need for a qualified candidate pool to be established, which is 180 degrees from what we're trying to accomplish there. So we simply wanted to ensure that where it was under 10, that a qualified investment pool, under some circumstances, not all, because most contracts, I would imagine, that you would enter into, the amount that the vendor would receive would be set. So there would be no variable as to whether or not they might receive compensation above $10,000.
All right. I, I have to think, this is the first time I'm seeing that language. I, I do have to think about it. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that's clear to me. The second question I had is, we reference 2C a lot with the pool. And 2C specifically is external investment managers. There's a lot of, I understand there's may language, but that's not how we would, you know, evaluate an external investment consultant or anything that we would procure under Section 5. So I don't know if that's the cleanest way to do it. I understand your, your desire is regarding a candidate pool, but if we look under 2, Section 2C, that's, that's all investment manager stuff. That's not stuff that, I mean, that a, an investment consultant or, you know, a proxy service would be part of that, that evaluation for, for that type of candidate pool. So those are very distinct and separate.
So I can, I can answer some of that.
Sure.
How is in a, how I have it written is, like in Section 4, instead of having the big list, you have C and 1, and then basically it just says the same thing with a sentence at the end. It says, "Interview talk that shall be developed to thoroughly vet each candidate", which gives it, which keeps the process the same, but you don't have those details. You have the details that fit appropriately to Section 4. Does that help answer the question?
I, I think so. I, I think it might be cleaner to, to actually do it differently, but that's obviously in, in your purview. And the other question I had, the last, sorry, the final question would be, on Section, Section 5, again, first, first time I'm, I'm seeing the new language, but the, the complication, I, I think, especially regarding, if, if you guys want to see a candidate pool, understand for, certainly for investment managers, for investment consultants specific to CERS. But so Section 5 is really kind of covers what I would consider shared services. And shared services, you know, the, the highest one, the, the largest one is custodial. So I wonder functionally how this works if we were to do an RFP for custodial services. You know, in this language kind of saying that you guys want to see a, we present a, to the CERS Investment Committee to get approved and then ratified by the Board. Obviously, a shared service like that can't be split between KE, PRS, and CERS. And I doubt that CERS would be in a position where they would, you know, allow KERS to make that decision for them. Is there any way that you can, this should be either a, something that's a coordinated effort and, and talk about that, or something that, that gets changed to, you know, be made at the, the KPPA Board level as opposed to both the C and the S, or the C and the K? You know, and, and my thought is, how you kind of provide oversight and governance of that is through, similar to the administrative budget process. So if there was a, a budget approval for certain services, you know, that, that kind of is the approval of, of the CERS Board. Those were just my comments.
Yeah, Stephen, I, I.
Again, I haven't had a chance to.
If I could on that, your, your analysis of, of Section 5 is 180 degrees different of what we were told at the end of November in terms of it seeking a shared RFP. This is, this is our, our policy. I don't know why you would be seeking a, a shared service under our policy if you weren't also seeking it under the KRS policy.
Oh, we would. We would. It wouldn't be different. Yeah, that's, that's my point, is that the recommendation we're going to make to certainly to K, because we're, Kerry's in the process of reviewing their, exactly that, is shared services would be very difficult to procure independently. Again, I go to CUSP, you know, it can't be, K can't want Northern Trust, and C wants BNY. We would have a very hard time making that, implementing that if those were independent decisions. So I, I would agree. It's not just, not just this policy. I, I think this would have to be aligned with both policies. That's why it would have to be a coordinated effort.
I, I tend to think that the, the C Board has the right to establish its own procurement policy separate and apart from the, the one-off of, well, we may at times need to do a shared RFP. It would seem to me that the easier way to handle that would be to have the investment staff, if, if it originated there, or if it originated from counsel, to have a motion made before both Boards that allowed you to then operate and do a shared investment as opposed to imposing upon the sovereignty of the CERS policies to say, "You don't get to have your own separate policy because we may need to do something jointly moving forward."
I certainly want it, wouldn't want to impose anything on the sovereignty of CERS in accordance with their assets. But I, I think this is, goes back to where, what makes sense for shared services is probably a delegation as opposed to having these types of requirements. And that, again, investment managers, investment consultants, 100% absolutely. I think it's just because difficulties in shared services. And it'll be, it's more common than you, you might think, Ed. I think there's, you know, if we, if we look at our proxy voting service, there would be a number of things that, that potentially could fall under this where I think would be very difficult for the, the two Boards to make a different decision on procurement specifically related to certain services that are across assets.
Right, but I, I'm, I'm not sure you addressed my solution to that, which would be that you, you go to both Boards and say, "This is what we need. Will you vote to allow us to do it?" That, to me, seems to be the cleanest way without infringing upon the sovereignty of CRK to handle situations like that as opposed to requiring us to have in our policy something that allows you to do something globally.
I tend to agree with Ed, which I'm sure Steve's not a big surprise to you. You know, there certainly are shared services. But I think the, the thing that, at least I, and I think several of the trustees have in the back of their mind, while there may be shared services, we're the ones flitting 65% of the bill. And we certainly want to work with, with, whether it's the, the K Board or the KPPA Board on any of those. Our job is to look out for the beneficiaries of this system, not the members of the K system. And, you know, based on that, you know, what with Eric and Ed and everybody put together with regard to this particular iteration of the procurement policy, which Ed's been kind, you know, has come about through the suggestion of Michael, that had a little bit different take on what our original procurement policy stated. We're, we're, we're trying to do that. But at, at this point, you know, this, this needs to move down the road. It doesn't, it doesn't need to continue to sit in the, in, in the weeds and not move forward with trying to get this project in particular underway with whatever been. with trying to get this project in particular underway with whatever vendor is ultimately chosen. Otherwise, we're continuing to potentially pay out dollars that we don't need to be doing, which impacts all of our beneficiaries.
Bill, I see your hand's still up, sir.
Yes, I've got to reorganize my thoughts. I still have confusion on the under $10,000 because when I reread that, I thought it meant that, you know, everything's got to have, you have to bring a selection of three to the board. And, you know, we only meet once a quarter, and so I don't know how administratively efficient that requirement would be. So, I mean, if that's the oversight the Board wants, but I guess I've seen lots of oversight through, through policy and guidelines, which is what this is, and that as long as it's between 10 and 49,000, you follow this process. If it's over, if it's 50 or more, you follow that process. Bringing it all the way down to 10 for the Board to make the decision, I mean, if that's what the Board wants, but usually it's not that, that low.
That green light. Let me, let me try to address that, Bill. Because we, Eric and I talked about this particular section for, for a long time. And I don't know how many people are under the RFP, how many people submitted a bid under the RFP. I don't know how many of them said they would do it for free, or there would be no charge to the system. I know that there are some vendors in the marketplace who offer that service. This will be at no charge to you. So if, if it were determined that a entity was being selected who said, we would do it for no charge, then quite probably they would fit under Section A, which today would not require you to develop a qualified candidate pool. The thing about the ranges that may be a little confusing is, most contracts are known what you're going to pay to the penny. So if it is a contract under $10,000, that contract is signed for $9,500 and we know what it is. There's not going to need to be any additional oversight on that. When we go from the, the next step up, 11,000 to 50,000, that contract's going to be signed for $32,000, whatever the dollar amount is. It's not going to, it's only in a very limited circumstance. And, and we quite frankly determined that given the issue that we had with our ability to utilize the policy, we had to address it. We had to put something in that would address that contingency. So that's what this does.
Well, but let me make a suggestion. I know we're, we're in the weeds here, but if you're trying to cover contingency contracts, then just say that. Don't, don't put a 10,000 or a this, that, and the other. Say contingency contracts have to have the 2C selection process. And that would clarify, because I read this saying, you know, you got, you got three even if it's under 10. And again, if that's, if that's the level that the Board wants, but if, if the intent is, well, we want contingency contracts to fall down under this, then just say that. Just.
There, there might well be some contingency contracts that would have dollar amounts attached to them and have a, if we have a waterfall system that if we do X, we get that much more. I think for us to try to do that would be, we would leave more things uncovered than we are here. This, I think, fairly clearly says, if you believe the compensation is more, could be more than 10,000. On a contract that I signed for 5,000, I had no inclination that that contract will be worth more than $10,000 to the vendor. So I, I just move forward and, and keep going. There is no additional oversight that's needed for that. But to, to segregate contingency, there's contingency of no cost, there's contingency of cost plus bonus, there are lots of different contingencies, and I'm not sure that we wouldn't be leaving more uncovered if we did that than what we're doing here. This is, I think, really straightforward. And, and again, but for the fact that we've been having this conversation, I never would have thought that we needed to include that. But the very fact that we're having this conversation about having to change the policy says, this is the way that ensures that we get a qualified candidate pool.
Okay. Two, two more times, I'll try to wrap it up. I thought we were going to bring forward a co-investment rewording, and it's not in.
No, no, that's, that's on the IPS. That'll be at the Investment Committee meeting.
Not, not on.
Yeah, that's, that's not in the procurement policy.
Number two, I understand that, that you're trying to meet an abbreviated deadline in order for this to get into place as soon as possible. But I would ask, like we did when we were talking about the co-investment, that before a policy or something like this is brought before the Board, that all of the partners, that would be KPPA Legal, the KPPA Staff, the interested parties in CERS, CERS Legal, all have an opportunity to make comments before it's brought to the committee, so that we have a clean version and we know what we're voting on. This is very confusing. You have red line that's, that's really bled all over, and I understand there's probably more than the context, but now we have red line on top of red line, and we're having to do it off the cuff. That, that makes me very uncomfortable. So I want to ask if that could be done in the future.
Yeah. In the future, Bill, it would certainly be my desire to do that. I would say that KPPA Legal has in fact outlined here, not from the standpoint of this is the solution, but this is the problem. So we took that input and came up with the solution. So this was very clearly run by KPPA Legal before it came to the Board.
So then I would ask, I would ask KPPA Legal if, if they discussed this and had any, any comments that were presented before this came before us.
Mr. O'Meara, all I'll say is, and I appreciate Ed's comments, that, you know, obviously we discussed our concerns with the original policy. We did not see this version of the policy until it was put into Board Books sometime after close of business on Thursday evening. So we were, we have not discussed the current version, the current draft of the policy with anyone.
And, and Steve, did you have conversations on your, how to implement this since it'll be your charge?
No. We, we did not see the, the draft language until it was put into Board Books, so have not had a chance to thoroughly review or comment.
But that's what I'm requesting.
Right. But, but, but Bill, I, I just have to, have to clearly say that our counsel determined that what we wanted to do fit within the policy as it was stated. But, but please let me finish.
Sure.
But we took the KPPA position, of which Steve was well aware, and said, okay, we can either force our position that we think we're right, or we can change the policy. But what I think we have to be unwilling to do is to wait another three months for the policy to get changed. So we know from what GAT said, when it was said to us, this policy will not work for what you want it to do, we know that what we've done here clearly addresses that. And if it doesn't, then we would have a, a real problem.
All right. I appreciate your comments, and they're specific to this.
Yes.
So I'm thinking we're talking at two different levels. What I'm asking is for, for us to adopt a process to make sure that all of the partners have discussions about what is being presented to the Board. You don't have to agree with them.
Right.
You can be on opposite ends. I'm not saying that it has to be a consensus.
Right.
I'm saying that everyone should have an opportunity to have conversation, and that way it's fully vetted, pros and cons, when it is presented to the Board.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with that, Bill. And I would have hoped that in June, as Michael indicated, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, that he had this concern about our policy in June, but it was not communicated to us until the last week of October, when we were looking to see what the implementation of our policy would be. So had we found out about it in June, we would have had a little more time to have a more orderly process. But given that we found out about it when we did, we had one of two choices to make. Either go through the orderly process, or make the changes that you're requiring us to make and make them, and allow the process to continue as expeditiously as possible, given the fact that we're now eight or nine months into this process already.
Well, I appreciate, again, you're talking about this one specifically. I look forward to all the partners having a chance to make comments on things.
Yeah. Yeah. Steve, I think you had your hand up next.
Yeah. And just for clarification, I appreciate there was a disagreement on the interpretation of the existing IPP language for CERS. But I would clarify that we've noted from the beginning, both KPPA Legal and KPPA Investment Staff, that we were following Section 5 of the CERS procurement policy. And those, I mean, that was noted back in July and August, specifically regarding what section of the policy. As Eric had stated, this is, this falls under, the prior board meeting, this falls under Section 5. We were following that. And I appreciate that there was maybe some confusion as to what specifically the language meant in Section 5, but I think it was, it was fairly outlined and consistent, as well as the language of the RFP that was approved as to what the process was for procurement.
I don't think, I don't think we're disagreeing with what you just said, Steve. I think what our issue, as it turned out, revolves around the differing interpretations, which I'm sure Michael's getting ready to address.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, I wasn't going to address the interpretation. I was going to address the timing of the June issue. As Steve said, I think the, the, as we made clear, we were going to follow Section 5. And, and an email was circulated, that's what we were going to do. There was a second email comment that I was forwarded, that Mr. Owens would reach out to me. I think that was probably in July, maybe early August, that Mr. Owens would reach out to me about that, as Mr. Herb, I'm sorry, as Mr. Willer had said to Mr. Owens, we're going to follow Section 5 of the policy, and I'll defer to KPPA Legal for, for what that means. Mr. Owens had commented, I'll, I'll reach out to Michael. That thought, that reach out never happened. So I just want to set the record straight on that part, you know, from my perspective, that, you know, as far as being, being clear on that, I just want, you know, to be clear that that conversation could have happened, and whether it did or didn't, well, it didn't happen, but it could have happened, but that reach out never occurred.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none at this point. Next question, of course, as to whether we want to move forward with this adjustment to the procurement policy. So I would ask if there's a motion to approve the amendment to the CERS procurement policy as presented.
So moved.
An emotion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Procurement policy is adopted. With that, I believe we've got a closed session if needed from Eric and Michael. Is that on the table?
There's not particularly too much to update.
I, I think it would be helpful, actually, if we had just a moment.
Okay. That's fine. Hearing that, is there a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810C to discuss pending litigation?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. A motion having been made in an open session moving to closed session for a specific purpose? Such motion having been carried by majority vote in open public session, the commission shall now enter closed session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to KRS 61.810C. Sean, if you don't mind, could you take this off?